I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Granite Falls School Board. And that's already said that, please stand for the
I pray to you just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, what nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight in attendance, we have Director Gockner, Director Dane, Director Ladue, Director Cherry, and myself, Director Kincaid, as well as our Superintendent Dame Keesland. Um, that moves us on to item number two A, Board Comments. Start down with Director Gockner.
I don't have anything there.
Director Dane?
Yeah, uh, well, I, I wanna say, I apologize for all the, the absences I've had. Um, just had knee surgery and I'm back um here, looking forward to this end stretch of the year. A lot of hard work that we have to do over the next couple of weeks, make sure that our budgets are in line and that we're ready for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year, so um not gonna be easy, but I know that with this board will be what we need to do to get um our system moving in the right direction.
Uh, yeah, from a W I, W I A A perspective, uh, no major updates there. Um, as far as comments, though, um, piggybacking and elaborating on Director Dane's comments. Um, you know, this, this coming year and coming years, um, we all have to address kind of a, that the student population, at least for the first, first time in a long time, first time since I've been on the board, um, is actually getting smaller, and that's, that's through a number, number of reasons. Um, you know, there's the sewer moratorium, there's also the fact that, you know, our co-op with Lake Stevens, uh, the students that are going to Crossroads, many if not all, uh, will eventually be making their way back to Lake Stevens. Um, and so I, I know that there are strong feelings within the community on both sides of growth, right? Some, many oppose it, some greatly want it. Um, fact of the matter is, less students means less funding, um, that's just how the model works. Um, but I did wanna say, you know, I'm confident in our district's administration, um, that we will act in a manner that best serves the students, 'cause at the end of the day, that's why we're all here, students, their outcomes. Um, and so we'll keep moving forward with that. Um, and then on a happier note, I know we're still, what is it, we're still like a month and a half away from graduation stuff, but it's by far the favorite time of year, and you'll probably hear it in my board comments here until we actually go through, and then you'll hear it after about how much fun it was. Um, it's great to, you know, shake everybody's hands and, and see all the success and hard work that's been put in and see all the, all the family members that are up in the crowd and all the teachers that are there that have supported them along the way. So I'm really excited for that here, but that's me for this week.
All right. Director Cherry?
Uh, yeah, first off, congratulations to Grandma and the wonderful addition, thank you for sharing the picture. Gorgeous, gorgeous addition to your family. Um, it's also Admin Day, so thank you to all the admins we have in the district. I tried to grab flowers, but I didn't have time, I was driving in from Tuck Willis, so I'll, I'll get you guys next time, or later, I should say. Um, uh, the other, I just wanted to talk, that, that's all on comments, just to go into legislative report. Um, uh, there is some, certainly some good news out of what is certainly a, a tough um session um that they're having right now. Um, uh, Senate fifty-two sixty-three was passed, um, which does a couple of really good things for sped. Um, the biggest which is it removes the cap on sped um and gets quarterly payments, which Marshall, I'm sure, will tell you is amazing. Now we don't have to essentially write an interest-free check to the state and then um, we, we, and then wait till the end of the year to be able to get paid some portion of that interest-free check back. So um, all of that doesn't start till the twenty-twenty-five school year, but um, that'll certainly help uh, school districts like us that are currently above the um artificially determined uh sped cap. So um, I, I, I do applaud um the, the Washington State for making that step forward. Certainly didn't do everything that we were hoping for, but um, it's certainly a, a big step forward. Um, and I believe it passed um on a ninety-seven oh vote too, so it's, it's good that everybody was kind of aligned and that. Um, that's all I've got.
Um. Uh, I wasn't going to address this, I never intended to address this, and then it was thrown out into the community this last week, so now is my opportunity to address this. Um, it was brought into question um myself and our, my entire boards. Um, whether or not we should be on the board, because some of us don't have children in this district. Um, I did have children in this district. Um, when I joined the board, I had children in this district. Um, because of my being on the board and being so involved with my kids in their schools, I found a love of education myself. I went back to school and I got my master's degree in elementary education, and I am now a teacher. I brought my kids with me to the private school that I work at. Um, is it anyone's business that I did that? No, it is not. I brought them there because it was what was right for my family. And I don't speak for the board on where their kids are, we have board members who have students in our district. But I will say that we are all very active in our community, and we love this community, and we love the kids in this community. I have an amazing neighborhood that I've lived in for fifteen years, it's longer than I've lived anywhere in my life, but here in Granite Falls. And I have tons of people in my neighborhood who have kids in this district, and I'm here for them. And my kids might be back, my school only goes to eighth grade, so they might be back, it's a strong possibility. But for right now, they're with me, and that's the most important place that they need to be at right now for them, for their, for their growth and education. So I just wanted to address that and because it's out there and whether or not we should be here or not, and are we vested in this uh, school board, I wouldn't be here, why would I be here if I didn't care? My kids are not here, why would I be here? I'm here because I care and because I love this place and I love this community, and so I just wanted to address that, so.
Here, here.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to item number three A, District Reports, Superintendent Dane Keesland.
Thanks. And if anybody gets whether she was a teacher or not, you just have to look at her hands, and they have paint on them. Um, do another hands up, Director Kincaid.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Paint, oh, my paint, I, I, I teach an art, I teach an after-school art class for kindergarten through second grade.
I love that, just love that. All right, um, we'll go to the superintendent report, Corey, could you hit, um, I think it's a couple of slides ahead, yep. Perfect, and one more. All right, I wanted to take a little, little bit of time tonight to talk about the rationale for the reduction in force, uh, the resolution, and thank you, board members, for, you know, kinda already speaking to this a little bit, I won't spend a ton of time here. But we have a legal requirement, um, if we anticipate that we could have a reduction in force, and the R C W is, is noted there, that requires a board approval of a reduction in force if there's going to be one. Um, and then written notice to any affected certificate of staff by May fifteenth, that's certificate of staff that are administrative or a certificate of staff that are, are teachers or ESAs in our system. Um, and so by having this on the board meeting tonight, it gives us enough time to then hopefully get more budget information um, from the state and the federal government and other entities. And then, you know, while we're, while we're engaging in the projected enrollment, um, you know, discussions, uh, the prototypical model um, that we have from the state and all the work that's being done by everyone at the back table um, to work with our building administrators on how many kids we project that we're gonna have and what that staffing looks like. It doesn't always fit nicely in the little box with a bow, and so I think all of our building leaders and um, and cabinet for the ongoing work a- around that. Um, the rationale for the RIF um is we have uncertain state funding. Uh, Director Carey spoke to, to one component, but there's still several things out there that we are not sure about. Um, the session is supposed to end on April twenty-seventh, it could go into an extended session, that generally doesn't bode well for districts, so we hope that they, they're able to, to wrap it up by then. The federal funding um is at risk. Um, I, I was having a discussion with our, some of our labor partners and, you know, we, we hope that if that does happen, that the state, you know, has, has some, some things that they might do, but we don't know what the, the, um, the feds are gonna do. And so that is two-point-one million, um, for us, those are everything from all the title programs that we have. Um, and then uh, special education, a portion of special education is funded from the federal government and then uh, child attrition. Declining birth rates, um, across the, the nation, actually, there are fewer incoming kindergarten students. Um, this year we have a hundred forty-two uh, kindergartners, one is sitting in the audience today. Um, and in this school year, and we projected about one-sixty, you don't know how many kinders you're gonna have, even with the work that we do with our other learning providers and things. Um, in past years, it's been between one-sixty-five and one-eighty-five, so you can see that there's um, just less kiddos coming to school. Um, there's a sunsetting, as um, Director Ladue talked about, the sunsetting of the inter-local agreement. Um, we knew that would happen someday, but uh, we've been working with Lake Stevens School District. Um, next year there will be less students at Crossroads High School, and the following year, there will, the, the agreement will sunset. Um, they will have their students back, and so we're really working, trying to work closely with them so we can get some firmer numbers, but um, it, it's looking to be forty to fifty less students at Crossroads next year. And then the overall enrollment decline, and we've done some work on that, but um, in November, we um, had fifty-six more kiddos in the whole system, K- twelve, um, than we do today, so seventy-five less than projection. And so we are trying to be really financially responsible in this RIF resolution in case we have to, to make some really difficult choices. Um, we do have some attrition, we do have, you know, some resignations and retirements and things, we will absolutely um, take those into consideration as we make those, as we make those decisions. And next slide. Our strategy is, um, again, in prior years, the, the enrollment shifts and the changes were smaller and absorbed through attrition, so if we maybe need to reduce a couple of positions, which we have done, we even did it, you know, when I was coming on last spring. Um, but that was generally at the district level in some toes-up positions and those kind of things. Um, we don't have as many retirements and resignations yet. Um, and then lastly, if it becomes necessary, we will work uh, with our labor unions um, and ensure that everything we do aligns with C B A, um, there's a reference there in the contract. In fact, we were working, Emily and I had a call with G F E A, I had a call with them this morning and then another call this afternoon. Um, really getting some, um, as we've dug into the, the C B A and some clarification on section eight-point-six. So um, we will work closely with them, these decisions are never, never done um, in isolation, and um, we will make sure that we follow the C B A and thoughtfully look at next year also being, you know, financially and fiscally responsible. Any questions on that? Okay. And now onto some good news. We had last Friday night, uh, next slide please, Corey. Um, last Friday night, the Pink Panther did strike again, and last Saturday night as well. And it was um, a good success, and there was, um, there's a picture of that, I was able to be there, 'cause again, the grandbaby was being born. And in true, you know, you know, tribute to one of our directors, the grandbaby's name is Dane, so, you know, obviously named after Director Dane. Um, but it, Pink Panther, and, and thank you to, to Trudy Sullivan and all the work she did to, to prep for that, and to all, it takes all people, right, all, all, there was a curtain that didn't get hung the week before, that, uh, the thing that lifts the curtain wasn't working, and our grounds crew and our maintenance department dropped everything and went over and hung the curtains so it could get unwrinkled over the week. Like, it is just kinda all hands on deck when you pull something like that off, so such a good production. Um, and then huge track meet last Thursday night um, at Granite Falls High School, and we have such a beautiful facility, so a huge thank you to our community um, for continuing to support our, our, our schools and things. Um, if you haven't come out to watch a track meet, you, you need to get there, it's, it's special and the view is, is, I think, unmatched. Um, lots of spring sports going on and those kind of things, especially with this kind of weather, making of games and, and lots of playing going on. S B A testing is here, Emily, anything on that besides the fact that the site was down yesterday for an extended period of time across the state?
The schools have done a great job getting everything scheduled for testing, we are all compliant. We just hope that O S B A can get their repairs done so that we can access all the things that we need to access in order to actually get to the tests. Um, but especially thanks to Don Munt, who is my administrative assistant, who has been burning the midnight oil to, to try to get some problems solved there, so.
Thank you. And then again, reminder, uh, we have four um, positions um, on the board that are up for reelection, so get that filing in. And then the graduation events, pay some special attention to that, and um, there's the schedule that Paris sent out to you, and if you have any questions on that, let me know.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, moving on to items from the floor, do we have any? Nope, okay. Uh, item number five, a new business, that uh, F C C L A National Conference, uh, presented by Stephanie Pinto.
Stephanie P I, come on, breathe. It's that way they can see. So our national qualifier is not here, she's actually at State F B L A today.
Okay, that's what I was asking, yeah.
So, but that, we brought her projects, you guys could see, um, she did a recycle redesign project, and this was her final, her end piece, um, and she also sent her, her medal, she's pretty proud of that. Uh, but this is what she won, and this is what we'll be taking to Nationals. Um, if you want, we can move it closer, if you guys wanna see it.
Running ban away.
Yeah. Uh, so the ba, the premise of her project was, she's concerned about all of the waste, all of the trash. You walk around our community and you see trash everywhere. She wanted to find a way to do something positive with that, and so this was her project, that's what she came up with. Uh, and she made it to Nationals.
Outstanding.
Um, so that's kind of where we're at. Uh, the next slide has our schedule. Um, so this is kind of, we'll actually fly out July fourth. Um, yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, last year, I spent Fourth of July last year on the road coming home from Nationals, so. Um, but um, this is kind of our, our schedule. Um, him will compete on the seventh, yeah, she competes on the seventh. Um, so we'll spend the evening of the sixth getting her board re-put back together, all of that. Uh, I don't have a lot of faith that this will make it from here to Florida in one piece, so we're gonna recreate it when we get there. Uh, but Nationals is, it's just an awesome experience for these kids. Um, Bree will be going with us, she'll be our, she's going as a chapter officer and as our second student. Um, and so she's gonna get all kinds of opportunities to meet kids from all fifty states, Puerto Rico, Guam, uh, all of that, which will be pretty awesome. Um, the next page is just who, or the next slide is just who is going to be attending. Um, and then the next slide, I've actually gotten our expenses down quite a bit. Um, they are now down to four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Um, I was able to get our flights in significantly cheaper. Um, we've got a couple of layovers and we're flying overnight, but it's worth it for the, we're saving about two hundred dollars doing it that way. Um, and then I was also, they added another hotel to our block, which was a lot cheaper. So I was able to book us into the cheaper hotel, so we're paying about nine hundred and eleven dollars per room, and we're getting two rooms. Um, and then they have reserved parks, um, Universal, Aquatica, and Disney, they've got days where those parks are blocked up just for our S C C L A kids. So we'll be doing some of that, and then transportation, we're gonna use the bus system. Um, I've taken kids to Orlando before, and the bus system is very well laid out, it's very easy to use. And so that's gonna be our main mode of transportation around, and we can get passes, it's thirty-six, basically thirty-seven dollars for each of us for the six days that we'll be there. Um, our fundraising plan, we are doing track concessions on, for the both middle school meets, the high school, and then the big district meet, the twenty-second and twenty-fourth of May. We're also gonna be selling, we've made some tiger keychains, we're gonna do cookies, Italian sodas, and popsicles at the track meets as well. Um, we're doing several dinners with the Eagles Club. Um, the auxiliary has asked us, or has invited us in to do dinners, those have been, we make anywhere between five hundred and nine hundred dollars a dinner, kinda depending on what, what we cook. Um, and so we've got, we did one on the eighth, we've got another one on the twenty-ninth, we've got two in May and we have two in June. Um, we're just waiting to see what those days are gonna be. The Eagles Ares gave us a fifteen-hundred-dollar sponsorship. We've also received two, what is it, two thousand? With Eco Car closing down, Eco Car decided that what they had in their camp, they were gonna split between S C C L A and F B L A, which is two thousand and something. That was, that was her, she's the one that figured that out first. Um. So that also helps significantly, and then my classes are also gonna look at doing some take and bake dinners. We've done enchiladas and lasagna in the past um, to the district, and those have gone over really well. So we're looking at doing that as well.
And Mrs. Smith, a quick one from Rambo, didn't Pam design the T-shirt for F B L A?
Yes, yes.
That she's at right now?
Yeah, Pam won the T-shirt design contest for F B L A.
Talented.
She is a very, very talented young lady, and involved in everything.
That's fantastic.
So, yeah.
That's awesome.
Do you have like a Q R code or something, if someone just wanted to give a donation, I could share on like my social media and stuff?
Um, we are working on that, that is not my strong suit, I was kinda waiting for Trudy to get done with the play, so she could help me figure that out. Um, but yes, we do plan to get something like that together.
Perfect, yeah, if you can share that with us, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, we will definitely do that. Okay, so Eco Car is gonna give each F B L A and S C C L A two thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Awesome.
You're close, you're thirty-six hundred, thirty-seven hundred bucks.
Yeah, we're really close.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome.
All right.
So we should be able to get there and even have a little bit left in our account when it's all said and done. At least that's our hope.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
That's great.
Yeah.
Did you get a picture of her? Yes, yes. Here, let me turn her around, so that way, well, she wants, they wanna get a picture of it, and I'm gonna let her get a picture of the front side of her bag.
We gotta do the picture.
It's not her project.
Awesome, thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Yeah, item number five B is the first reading to amend policy thirty-one forty-two, admission of non-immigrant J-one and F-one exchange students, this is our foreign exchange student.
Um, and I, I didn't see on the, um, on our board docs, is this a WASDA thing or?
It, it is copied from WASDA, um, it hadn't been updated since, oh, Paris, was it two thousand two? I, I, it, it'd been a number of years, and we didn't have limits. Um, and so I checked with all of the superintendents in the region to see kinda what everybody was doing, and they, they generally have, you know, some limits on how many, we get no funding from the state, we, it's a rich cultural experience, it's amazing for our kids, all of those things, and we get no funding from the state, so if we have a lot of kids, you know, we're, um, we're expending a lot of resources in a reduction cycle, and so we wanna have a nice balance there. So, um, most, um, Sultan is a perfect example, they have a limit of two. Um, and I think our, I, so it is WASDA's policy, and we just decided, let's just go with that, and then we'll put a limit there and still allow for a couple of kiddos, and then how we approve them, um, will come through district office as well.
Okay, how, does it affect any current students? Or with this?
No, it's for next year, yeah, so we have some exchange students right now, but this would go into effect and effect starting the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
Okay.
Yeah, great question.
Okay.
Um, and so, are, are we in discussion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so I, just speaking of, as someone who, I hosted two exchange students for an entire year. Yeah, um, uh, and it was probably one of the most cool, enriching things that I've done just with my kids. I think even Miss Barth in the back met them and stuff like that, and it, it was, I still talk to them to this day. And absolutely love them, and, and so in that, I kinda got, um, involved with uh, different organizations to sponsor people and um, one, they definitely, there's, one of the reasons why um Granite got so many exchange students is because we didn't have a cap, and I, I certainly understand the balance between, you know, the, the costs and the enrichment piece and stuff like that, but um, and to make it clear, I, I, the financial side of things and, and my responsibility to be, uh, make sure that we're always, you know, keep the money in mind, um, this is certainly something I'm gonna support, but it does make me sad, because, you know, uh, one of the things I love most about when we do graduation is those six or so kids that are usually at the end of the line where they're from all over the world, and, and they're getting to experience America and, and, you know, and, and certainly a significantly different culture than they have, so yeah, it doesn't come with, you know, without a, a certain amount of sadness that I, I understand the reasons why, but that we're needing to do something like this, so there's, there's my two cents. Um, I make a motion that we pass the first reading to amend policy thirty-one forty-two, admission of non-in agreement, non-immigrant J-one and F-one exchange students, foreign exchange students.
Second.
Motion has been made, second and all in favor?
All right.
All right. Moving down to item number five C, Resolution Number twenty-four slash twenty-five dash oh five, Reduction in Educational Programs. Um, before we have discussion, I have a little something that um, I'd like to read. This is just because it is our goal and passion to be as transparent as possible. So, um, as we prepare for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-sixth school year, the Granite Falls School District is facing several key challenges that are impacting our staffing outlook. First, we are projecting a decline in student enrollment due to a combination of factors, ongoing decreases in birth rates, the current building moratorium within the city of Granite Falls, and the conclusion of the Lake Stevens Crossroads A L E agreement. Together, these conditions contribute to a smaller anticipated student population across our schools. In addition to enrollment-related impacts, we are also navigating significant financial uncertainties. At the state level, there remains considerable concern about the adequacy and stability of K- twelve education funding in the upcoming biennium. Federal grant funding, which has been instrumental in supporting key programs, also faces potential reductions or discontinuation. While we are hopeful that the, that natural attrition will allow us to align staffing levels with enrollment and budget realities, we must also plan responsibly in case further reductions are necessary. In our continued effort to meet the district's seven percent minimum fund balance target and ensure long-term financial health, we are recommending the following reductions for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-sixth school year. Up to ten classified positions, up to ten certified positions, up to one certi- certificated administrator position, potential reductions in classified hours and or workdays as appropriate. Please be advised that due to seniority and layoff procedures outlined in our current collective bargaining agreements, the number of initial RIF notices issued may exceed the final number of reductions implemented. However, the total number of staff reductions will not exceed the figures listed above. We remain committed to supporting our students, staff, and community throughout this process, and we will continue to communicate transparently as we work through these necessary adjustments. So, discussion.
Um, I guess I just wanna say, kind of harkening on your comments earlier. Um, but I, I love this community, it's been, the, the people in this community have been the, the best things for me and my family. Um, that I've ever had the opportunity to experience, and I've lived a lot of different places, and just like you, I've lived in Granite longer than any place I've ever lived before, we moved is every two or three years as a kid, and um, I, this community is so entrenched in, you know, every, i- into so much of my life, it breaks my heart, and, and I know that this impacts real people, real people in this community that um, are employed by the district that use um, the, what they're paid from the district to put food on, on, you know, on their table, and um, it absolutely breaks my heart that we're in a place that have to do this, and um, but unfortunately, I, I understand the financial side of things and the, and the whys, and that um, we have to be fiscally sound, I mean, nobody is going to uh, ride to Granite on a white horse with a huge check and, and continuously save us, so. Um, I know that these numbers are big, um, but the hope is, is that we don't even have to use it, or, and, or that if it does, it's, the number is much smaller than that. This is just allowing the superintendent to do up to these, um, and I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe something does happen that allows us not to have to be able to move forward with this RIF notification, so. Um, that's what I have.
No, I will, I will say, this is, this is not, I know, I know it, it, we feel it the most in Granite, because we're in Granite. This is not, however, unique to Granite. Um, you know, I, I'm a huge analogy guy and um, it would be one thing if there was forced spending habits and and lack of oversight and stuff like that, but that, that is, I, I can say as, as a representative for the community as well from within my district. Um, like that is just not the case. When I bring up the analogy piece, it is, it is having your job and being very penny-wise with your money and then your employer says you have a twenty percent pay reduction and now you have to go make things work. Well, if we're at home, when you had to do that, you know, cable goes, maybe going out to dinner isn't as often, maybe like choices have to be made um, for the long term, right? And that, that short-term comfort of keeping things in place will really harm us in the long term if we, if we don't plan accordingly. Um, and again, to, to reiterate Director Carey's points, the hope is, right, that, that not any of this would need to be in, but it's just, it, it has to be voted on. It has to be something that, there, there's a process behind it. Um, and, and I have all the trust in the world in the administration that, that we have within uh, within our admin office, within our buildings. Um, and so this is, yeah. It, the hard part about being on the board is what, for, for better or worse, right? All of our meetings are in public. I, so you see all of the hard decisions. You see all of those. Um, and it is really hard to be, to see the positive when, if you just observe board meetings, because a lot of really tough decisions are made within these. The positives though, if we can realign on those, eh, we are, we are not a faltering school district. We are not, we are quite the opposite. We are, we are, we are doing better in many areas than other districts are not. Um, and again, I go back to my call, I, I call back to my comments earlier about graduation. Right? Those are, graduation, if you come to graduation, if you come to success in Ed Knights, like that is, that is what we are here for and that is what we, we really thrive upon and that sort of continued success is not possible without the hard decisions that have to be made. So um, I'll leave it there. It's, no, nobody, I'll try not to speak for the board, but I think it's pretty safe that like, nobody on this board is looking for a reduction in force, just for a reduction in force, right? It is, like I said, an employer saying, hey, you're, we're going to pay you this much less, much being the federal government. Um, and you know, just the, the funding from the state that comes from having, you know, potentially less students attending our schools, so.
Yeah. Um, I would uh, encourage anybody that is listening on YouTube um, that uh, doesn't understand how our schools are funded and, and has trouble grappling with the idea that we have to look forward and anticipate uh, less funding in the near future. Um, take the time to get a hold of our administration, talk to them about what the funding is. There were some videos put out by our former administration, um, which included Marshall, uh, describing how schools are funded. There's a lot of people in the community that don't understand the funding models for the state of Washington and the challenges that school districts face um, every year, uh, trying to get adequate funding for our schools. Um, when I started on the board, I'm in my third year on the board. Uh, the first year, uh, I, I can remember Director Carey concerned because our balance, our fund balance was dropping um, uh, incredibly fast. Uh, uh, the special education um, costs were rising um, at an unanticipated rate. We couldn't, we couldn't get a hook in front of it. Um, and with this board, we have gotten in front of most of it. We are trying to be fiscally responsible to the entire community. There are hard choices that we have to make every day. Um, in regards to that, I, I think that we have an amazing administration that is keeping the board informed and, and making sure that um, we have options put out in front of us that support the school district as a whole going forward. Our goal is to provide the best education possible for the funding that we get. And, and I think that the integrity of the board stands that we are doing, and unfortunately because of that, we have to make hard decisions in preparation. And again, along with my colleagues here, I'm hoping, I know hope's not a strategy, but I'm hoping that we don't have to use it, but we have to be prepared.
And, and actually too, eh, eh, I, I would, yeah, would strongly encourage if you're, if you're unaware, aware of the school funding model, yes, definitely dive in further, figure out all of that, but even just like a quick Cliff Notes on it as well is the district's money, and this, this was a huge shock for me when I came in. The district's money is not like your, this is not like your personal money. You receive a paycheck, that money can go wherever you want it to, right? You get a paycheck, you can buy a car, a house, a boat, food, whatever that you want. Districts have buckets and there will be capital funds which can only go towards buildings and resources and structures. There will be the general fund which pays towards employees and and, and other circumstances like that. There's a transportation fund which pays for buses and we cannot take money from a transportation fund to pay teachers. We cannot take money from the capital projects fund and pay teachers. Um, and so it is, it's very limiting and that was a huge eye-opening experience for me, honestly, when I did get onto the board is realizing that money is not money. It is, it is bucketed areas in which you are allowed to spend. Um, and so I will put that as the Cliff Notes, but again, dive deeper if you're so interested to figure out like, where is all of this going? Where does it come from? How does it all work?
Okay. No more discussion?
No. Then I move that we approve resolution number twenty-four slash twenty-five dash oh five, reduction in educational programs.
Well, second.
The motion has been made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item number six A, unfinished business. There is none. Moving on to item number seven, the consent agendas. Are any discussion? No? Okay. Uh, without discussion, that means it passes with unanimous consent. And that concludes this meeting of the Granite Falls.
Hold on. We are going to, you want to announce the executive set?
We are going into an executive session. We'll take about a five-minute break and then head into executive dis- executive session at about what, six, say six fifty?
Yep, and then we need to determine what time we're going to be done and if there's going to be any action.
Um, how long are we thinking, fellas?
I think thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Is that too much?
Yeah, we'll, we'll start with thirty.
Okay, we'll start with thirty minutes. So um, at, what would that be, seven twenty?
Yeah, yes.
Seven twenty.
And there's going to be no action.
Oh, and no action will be taken. Okay, so that concludes the Granite Falls School Board meeting and it is six thirty.
Thank you.